Our school committee meeting earlier, before we went into executive session. But I will just reiterate that this is the Cohasset School Committee meeting of Wednesday, September 5th, 2018. Regular school committee meetings are televised and recorded. We've already done our call to order and had a roll call. So if anybody would care to join us, we will now say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Does anybody have anything that they want to say?
I'm Marshaary and I just want to always be a bug in the ear of everyone for start school later. And the only other thing I wanted to mention, and I actually didn't formulate anything official to say, but I've been hearing about stuff that's going on in the school community and my only, I don't know how you could police it, but like on Cohasset 143 and things like that, I just-
Freedom of speech.
I would appreciate though, if as a community, people would hold off comments that may affect children, that could, you know, when you say, "I find this hard to believe," regardless of the validity of any situation going forward, that has an effect. Hearing something like that has an effect on children in the future. So I think everybody, I would love it if there was some way to have adults be as responsible as we want the children to be in poisoning themselves and socially.
I hope that there are a lot of people at home watching and listening to your comments. Thank you.
Because whatever you say can be harmful for children.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So next is the approval of the warrant. And could I have a motion to approve warrant 19-03S?
So moved.
And do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, roll call please.
I, Walker.
I, Barbara.
I, Jean Estino.
I, Ellen Marr.
Okay, next is the superintendent's report.
Thank you. We opened school. Whether we're ready or not, we are.
That's great.
We were ready. It's very exciting. Changes, children. It's probably one of the days that I look forward all summer and it always meets my expectations. It's good. But the principals are here to tell you all about their day. So, I don't know, you want to pick straws, is who goes first? Perhaps you want to start with the high school and work.
Sure. So Carrie and I are kind of here in tandem. The middle high school, obviously our first day with teachers was with Patrick co-stating and Louise leading the conversation at St. Anthony's, since some of you were able to be there. Our first opening day at the building level with teachers included, as it always does, our safety training video and some review of some faculty updated procedures, but really just a message of the tremendous faith that I have in them as a group of teachers and the connections they make with students and the joy that they are able to bring to one another in terms of their professional capacity and the standard to which they hold themselves and the wonderful things that they do for kids. And so I got some, we all got some really great feedback from teachers feeling it was a very positive start to the year, so that was great. And then of course, yesterday was a little bit more exciting with kids. And so we have a bit of a tradition, we kind of work our way up with assemblies throughout the day. So we started with the sixth graders at 7:30 in the morning and they were ushered right into the auditorium. And I said, "How do you do?" I gave Miss Igashi a proper introduction and off she went with tremendous enthusiasm, leaving the sixth graders through that. And then such is my confidence that when the seventh and eighth grade rolled around, I said to her, "I have absolutely no reason to be a part of this except for to be here as a support to you." So the sixth graders don't know me, so of course we wanted to say hello. I said, "But the seventh, eighth graders already know me, it's all yours kid." And super enthusiasm, she had the kids chanting and happy and excited to be there. And they took, they took, paid careful attention to anything she had to share, including some adjustment in some of our rules and expectations around technology at the middle schools. So there wasn't a lot of hubbub about it. She wasn't booking any complaints anyway and it was terrific. It was really terrific. And so I feel pretty grateful to have Carrie Igashi here. I think she's going to be fantastic. She's really meshed nicely with myself and Mr. Scott already as an administrative team. And I will overshare a text that she sent me the other night, "I'll be so positive, you know, I might make people sick." You know? So I thought to myself, "It's perfect, fantastic." So I really thought that, yeah, it's, we're off to a really great start. And then at the high school level, of course, we do a ninth grade, then a 10 and 11 joint meeting, and then the senior class meeting with the senior class advisors. And I'll be honest, the most exciting thing that happened at the senior class meeting was them having quite a bit to say about the new traffic pattern and how it impacts them personally. But I was quick to remind them of the luxury of being a Cohasset student where one doesn't pay for parking and that parking is a privilege and not a constitutional right. And so they did ask to, you know, to where they should lodge their complaints and I said, "Well, son, you do whatever you need to do, but in the meantime, show up, be on time, be respectful, and when you're intersecting with parents in that enter and exit line, you have to be considerate or you may lose the privilege." But they were excited to start talking with Mrs. Moriarty about senior activities, you know, and what that might look like this year. And our freshmen had already gotten a wonderful introduction and orientation from Mr. Scott as to the expectation. So really our message always to the freshmen is that, and actually Carrie delivered it to all of the students in the middle school as well, is that one of your chief responsibilities here is asking for help. So we can reach out often, but you've got to let us know when you need something. And for the freshmen, that transition piece of, "Come to see any one of us and we'll give you advice on how to have a conversation with a teacher." If that's what you figure out freshman year, is how to comfortably approach a teacher to discuss something, that that would be a tremendous growth. So, anything you'd like to add?
I'd like to hear the chants.
No, it was more like a "Good morning, skipper!" So by the third time, it was quite a cacophony.
And I want to thank you greatly for redirecting all comments about the traffic pattern to Christine, who has been venting the Pepsi.
I was going to ask, how has it gone in the first couple of days?
I've not received the complaints.
Well, I noticed because I happen to leave my house to go to work at about 7:22 every morning and usually at the bottom of Cushing and Pleasant Street, there's the Mad Dash. People turning left to go Cushing and upon. I haven't seen a car in two days. So neither, the students are coming earlier because they usually fly right through there, you know, because they want to get here earlier or not, so I don't know, they're coming earlier.
I came both mornings around 7:15, just to see the traffic pattern and people are very, very nice to one another. So they're weaving in and out very nicely.
Good.
This morning, there were cars already up here about six or seven after seven.
And how's the afternoon on Pond Street?
My head's usually down on my desk.
If I can, if I can get the children to stop their annoying beeping habit, we'll be clover.
Okay.
You know, but aside from that, particularly because it may sound, it may be just silly to them, but somebody remarked to me, "The first day of school sounded like the last, those kids were so excited." And I said, "Well, it's just one of their, it's just an annoying habit." But I'm sure the parents are going to quickly tire of being behind and in front of the beepers, so we'll address that for certain. I think that it's been going pretty smoothly. Yeah, Brian and I and Carrie, we've all been outside in the mornings and the afternoons to survey the situation and I think it's, I think it's-
Couple of hiccups, which we expected. One of them is the food van that needs to go up in the morning at 7:15, but we've sort of arranged there's enough room to absolutely an emergency get by. And one of the food service workers needs to be here early. We figured all those out, those are the major pickups. Other than that, tomorrow's our first day without a voice detail, so we'll see what happens tomorrow.
I did note when I came yesterday to review the warrant, that the no left, no right turn sign has gone from the pole at the bottom of the driveway?
Yes. Because we no longer need it.
We don't need it.
That was to prevent students from bypassing the cars on the hill.
Right.
And cars are no longer there, so we're safe.
Okay.
That's really what that was. It was because the cars were lining up and we were afraid students would go into the opposite lane up the hill.
Right.
And they all hold our breath until 2:30.
Well, I'm sure it's in storage someplace safe if we need it again.
I'm sure it is.
Okay.
And we do have a new crossing guard, Lexi, and I don't remember her last name.
Xavier.
I'm sorry?
Xavier.
Xavier is our new crossing guard, who the children are absolutely going to love. She's like little Piper Finn.
Oh my goodness, she's so cute.
So she's, she's just a young, cute, smiling face they see every morning, so it's going to be great.
Yep.
Yes, thank you. And?
So I'm here to talk about the first day at the Deer Hill with staff and I think it went really well for my inaugural one. We started with a breakfast, a breakfast together, and then our staff meeting. One of my goals this year is to flip a lot of the content for the staff meeting and push out kind of what I call "need to know's," and so we can get all the administrative things just with a quick thumbs upside down, you know, if we need more discussion. So we were able to roll through a lot of things really quickly. We began, actually before we even got to that, I did kind of just a welcoming activity, just kind of set the tone for the year. So I read, actually I didn't read it first, we did an art project. They were each given a piece of paper and a Sharpie and told to draw a horizontal line somewhere in the middle, any kind of line they wanted. And then they had watercolors and they were told to paint the top half. And Louise and Patrick saw, and there's some on my Twitter, there was quite the range, which is exactly what I was going for.
We did all the appropriate, ooh.
Ah, yes. And then I read the book, Sky Color by Peter Reynolds. And the gist of it is that this artist is tasked with painting the sky for a mural, but she doesn't have any blue paint. And at first, it causes her a lot of anxiety. Ultimately, she discovers, as she goes throughout her day, all the different changes that the sky makes. And then ultimately, her sky looks like this. And so after reading this book, we took an opportunity to museum walk and kind of look at our own artwork. And the message I really wanted to communicate was that idea that as educators, we bring our own perspective and our perception and our own way of doing things, and our students do that as well. And our goal for the year is how do we create that into a cohesive vision? And how do we recognize all our own individual, unique parts and yet have that collective goal? And it was, I couldn't have asked for a better opening day than Peter DeWitt because so many of his messages I was able to launch off of in my own message that day and really recognize, one that really stuck out was that idea that do it your way and do it well. And it's really about that end game, that the students are engaged and the students are learning. And, you know, if you are a supreme lecturer and you can stand up in front of a group and engage your students that way, then that is the right modality for you. And if you are a small group, centers-based teacher and that's effective for you, then that's what you need to run with. And so I wanted the staff to have the message that I'm new and I do come with a lot of classroom experience, but I'm not there to impose my perspective on them and my sky color. So that was how we began our meeting and then again, going into those nuts and bolts. And then we had an opportunity for, we had a lot of curricular work this summer in multiple areas. So for this first meeting, we had some social emotional work, but we focused on the academic piece. So I had our reading specialist spoke, our math specialist spoke, and Cheryl Chapman, fifth grade teacher who led the way with the social studies work, spoke to the staff and just gave them a quick overview of that summer curricular work that they had done. A big chunk of our meeting then was spent looking at our specialist schedule. As you know, we made the change with the music piece. And again, I wanted to bring that cohesive message and that collaborative message. So rather than pushing out the schedule in isolation and then each teacher creating their day and then having those extra pieces like music and math and reading support having to find their way in, I wanted it to be a two-way conversation. And so teachers had an opportunity to work together and look at their schedules and make changes in that kind of a way. And I found it to be really effective. It went really well. And then we had some dream box training, there was a webinar for classroom teachers and a math program that we're using this year, an intervention program. And the rest of the day, they were on their own. I think it was really, a really positive day. I had a lot of fun. The first day was, yesterday was fast, faster than as a, you know, in my other roles, but it was, it was great. I think that our new process that mirrors the Osgood for keeping the doors closed until the start of the school day worked really well. And I think it really sends the message that school starts at 8:20, you have 10 minutes to come into the building, get yourself settled and be ready to start your day. I think it speaks to our goals for safety and security in the building. And I was really pleased with how that's gone the last couple of days. You know, I'm speaking to children in the morning that are out there a little early and just saying, "Okay, look at, you know, think about what time you left today and tomorrow I want you to leave, you know, five, 10 minutes later." And really trying to narrow, narrow that time point that they're there. But the numbers were not bad at all and they were incredibly respectful and patient and I couldn't be more impressed and pleased overall with the Deer Hill. I've had a great time these last two days getting into classrooms, sitting down, morning meetings and looking in on things. And I'm incredibly impressed with just the range of expertise in the building. It's been a wonderful, wonderful start. One last thing is I have to give some props to Ashley Coffield, who did an amazing bulletin board. I had a vision for, I wanted a staff bulletin board where every single staff member in the building, everyone, lunch, lunch support, everything, were displayed. But I didn't want it just to be a staff wall, I wanted it to have a message. And so I shared with Ashley, you know, that I wanted this message to be about how, you know, all of these people, all of these adults in this building for our students. And of course, she took that and ran with it. And so again, if you haven't stopped by the Deer Hill, I hope you'll come see that board. It's on my Twitter feed. It's a great, just a really great message. And again, going with that idea of building that culture and community, which I think is my, really my charge for this year.
The sidewalk messages are awesome.
Oh, yes. So Labor Day, we had, it was great. I guess the year before, two teachers, Erica Perrell and Robin Costa, our adjustment counselor, had come together and they chalked messages. And this year, I think there were at least a dozen of us there on Monday morning. And it was hot and everyone was in such a good mood and they, some of them brought their children and we just chalked inspirational messages outside the building all around. It was just so much fun and again, so impressive that, you know, on the last day of summer, that this was a choice that these teachers made or these educators and staff members made to come to the school and do this. And it's really cute to see the kids reading it, taking pictures next to it. And I just love the message that it sends.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask, I haven't found you yet on Twitter, what's your Twitter handle?
@DeerHillschool. And I don't know if that matters, but the D to H and A cost are capitalized.
That they're, that they're licensed.
I don't know if it matters. Pat is my Twitter mentor.
That'd be a good thing.
I'm not sure that's a good.
I'm pacing myself.
He tweets a lot.
I know.
And he retweets.
Yes.
A lot.
A lot.
Almost as much as Cohasset Sports.
Cohasset Sports, yes, I see, yes, yes, yes. I'm definitely new to Twitter. You know, I'm not on Facebook, I'm not on, you know.
We'll teach her, right?
Yes, yes. Well, I use balloons a lot in my classroom and so I really have kind of the three-pronged approach with Twitter. I really want it to be, you know, one, the need to know, the announcements of things. And I've had parents ask, "Will you be communicating this other ways?" Yes, Twitter will always be the cherry on top, it will not be the primary. The second rule for me for Twitter is, you know, here's something to think about, here's an interesting article, or, you know, how do we get our kids ready for this or that? Something that, you know, through the lens of an educated educator. And then the third piece is the fun piece. I've started doing deer sightings and so, taking advantage of the fact that I live in the community, I've had a couple so far, if I randomly spot a child, then I might ask their family, "Oh, can I take a quick picture of you?" And I was telling the staff that the second one I did, I happened to be getting my hair done. I will admit on TV that I was in full foil and the family came up, "Oh, Mrs. Sullivan, I'm here to be principal." Yes. So, that's a choice still in here. And so, but the little girl was getting her haircut and so I got her picture and so she was one of my deer sightings. And so again, trying to, you know, acknowledge, yes, I live here and you will see me in shawns and my sweats and that's okay, because we're real too.
Wait, you don't live at the school?
No. Lately, yes. Lately, yes. But, no, other than that, I'm around.
For sure time, yes. Only for the third grade. Yes.
I was just going to say that I was gonna, I'm glad you mentioned Ashley's board, because it's crazy.
Yes.
And she was actually, I wrote her name, Ashley Coffield.
Yes.
On our school committee goals thing about recognizing people who selflessly give their time.
Beyond selflessly.
And she's, she's a gifted artist, I just, she can do everything.
Her vision is amazing and just the dedication of her time.
Yes.
You know, I first connected with her my first year here, so I was able to tap into that resource early on. And just so generous of spirit and so talented.
She's amazing.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you very much, all of you.
Thank you.
And thanks for joining us.
Yes.
Lisa has a college student in her house, she's away tonight, but Pat and I were both there. I did see the ESPs were on the sidewalk with pom poms cheering their classes on and music blaring. And music teacher has his new xylophone made of rosewood. We have some very clever people who made such a deal with the vendor that he made quite a deal on them and saved us, got better for what money he was given. So those are being set up. The school looked amazing. They've done all the cleaning on the high stairs and all of that. The kindergartners came in and all the parents were put into the computer lobby guard as they came, so that they're already registered, you don't have to go through that each time they come in.
Oh, that's great.
So it was well organized, it was a well-oiled machine. Things were set up for all of the students who either had special requests or whatever, but parents were with the kindergartners doing a word search and it was a very interesting, from a teacher's perspective, very interesting to see, there's the class leader, there's the rule follower, there's the reader, and they're five years old, they're absolutely adorable. We were still registering a student that day too, so I got to sit with Charlie in Bond and the nervousness. I did check with all the nurses that day because it's been worn, to say the least, it's been worn. The nurses are reporting back to me if they see anyone who has come in with any kind of concerns, there haven't been. And the nurse said she just had one, but it was nerves.
Oh.
And it was one of those like, "I'm so scared, I'm going to throw up." But it was a fun day and Lisa treated the staff to lunch following. She had a fundraiser the night before we opened school in honor of Laura Keating and the outdoor playground and I think 40 or 50 adults came. So they made a fair amount of money and it was just a great time for staff to get together before it was at the Lightkeeper's House. So it was, it's just been a spectacular opening. It was very upbeat and wonderful. There've been very few, at least not to me, complaints. It all went to Christine.
Wow.
I think I put my extension to follow and I think that's really, really good. But so far, it's been good. So, yeah, we opened and we did.
Just a comment on Osgood, FYI, if you haven't been up on Old Pastor Road, it's paved. It's fully wide and paved, but the old gate is still there. I couldn't figure out unless the new gate that's supposed to go in is in the exact same location, so the steel gate is there and there's yellow tape. And, I mean, you can, you can walk by it and there's a hand-painted piece of plywood that says, you know, "Under construction, pass at your own risk" or something like that, but-
But it can be accessed, that'd be great.
Yeah, yeah, you can, yeah, you can still walk down it, but-
And while we're on the outside of the buildings, and I did send it out today by Blackboard, September 12th, which is Tuesday, the Deer Hill School will be fenced off and the work is going to be starting, the digging is going to start next week on digging up the, picking up all the chips, digging the, what I call the green river to all the equipment. And it should take about two weeks, so till the end of September, the playground will not be available. So, and that will be repeated in the newsletters on Friday. But I did send it out as a tool of the community because I know that families use the playground other than early school time.
Right.
But that's exciting, we finally are going to see it done and it will be, it should be looking really great. And the two cla, three classrooms were painted at Deer Hill this summer. And they're an off kind of white and they look clean and wonderful. And the two end rooms are Mrs. Jordan and now Mrs. Lindy, who was formerly Miss Allen. And it overlooks the playground, so they're going to have a lot to see.
Yeah.
So it's, it's been a great, the building looked great, great things are happening. Teachers were working, it's great.
Good.
I picked up a whole library title of things to read for the kids.
There should be a lot of it.
I did, catching up on my adolescent reading, but it was great. And Patrick also did quite a bit of work before we opened the building, so we had the induction program for new teachers. And you're on?
Yeah, so the highlight of the end of my summer, as it was last year, was working with our new educators. I should say we have eight ESPs who are not part of the formal induction that is required by the state for new teachers, but Cohasset provides for all the new full-time educators. And we had eight, well, actually we had 10 new educators who were part of this, two of which, of course, one is to my left here.
He went for the ice cream.
Michael. And Carrie Igashi, who, you know, you obviously saw earlier today. But we had eight amazing educators who, I'm just going to provide so much to the Cohasset community, the goals of the induction, and it was three days this year. And I felt a lot more at ease this year for sure, because last year I had to induct everyone without really knowing Cohasset about myself. It was a little bit difficult, but I was able to share with them sort of what I learned in the year. The goals of the induction really, the three days, were to get, for the teachers to get to know the learning culture, to get to know the actual, the players in the learning community, the initiatives that are outlined in our strategic plan, and then really to form a professional learning community amongst themselves that will help them throughout the year. And then of course, we are attaching them and grouping them with mentors who will work with them throughout the year and who I will work with along with the new teachers throughout the year to make sure their journey is a smooth one. So the first day started off really with kind of tapping into what their own personal visions were. And we get a chance at the end, we did an, I hope, exercise similar to what we did last year with all staff, with them. And I tweeted it out, so you might have seen that. But there are some, some nice statements from them that really shows what kind of educators they are. Then we met some of the, we dove into the strategic plan and looked at what we have as vision for our students here. And then we met various people in the, in the school community. We met, of course, our school resource officer, Officer Taylor, and we met Patty Thompson, who is head of the Class Education Association. Mary Buchanan, our Student Services Director, spoke to them. And then we concluded the day with a whirlwind tour of Cohasset, my whirlwind on the tour, with our tour guide extra near Jane Peskettori. It was like everything about Cohasset I learned. It was a lot more focused this year, I learned a lot. And we had a Kahoot quiz, quiz at the end, which was amazing. And then day two, we looked at our major initiatives and we went over, after we talked about, we did talk about our MEKO program. Lisa was not able to join us, but Louise filled in nicely and gave some great information about it. We of course, worked on social emotional learning to give them a platform of where we are in the district and where we're going. SAMR, the digital learning model, you've heard about it in past meetings, UDL, digital learning of course, our project-based learning. We talked about our summit and what we might do with our summit going forward. And then we talked about some nuts and bolts like teacher certification and evaluation training and they all felt comfortable creating SMART goals as they left. So it hopefully prepared them very well. And then the third day was a breakfast, but they got, some of them for the first time got to meet their mentors, some had already met their mentors. And we were trying to get to know each other and then move into the building for some important building work. So I think it gave them a really a good foot up, they were able to get their technology, work on getting set up with their technology, which is always a concern, work on getting into their classrooms. So I felt really good about, well, one, I felt good about the group we had, and secondly, I felt good about what we provided them to kind of be ready for the year. So it was very exciting. And then, you know, actually, if you look in your packet, you turn to the back page and I'll let Louise do the honors with this, but there are a couple of photos here. One has my left hand in. We did conclude the bus tour with a stop at J.J.'s, which was a highlight of the tour, I have to say. Which was a highlight of the tour, I have to say. Um, and, uh.
Michael went for the ice cream.
Michael did. He showed up. Somebody showed up for that part. No, I'm just kidding. He was there for other parts. But, um, and then on the right you can see, um, eight of the, eight of the educators there. Um, so I'll let Susan tell you.
We, we hired, this is probably the, the smallest hiring year since I've been here, um, tenth, tenth season. That's remarkable. But at Osgood, we have hired, um, one, two, three, four, five, six ESPs. Some are, uh, three were, two are replacements, but others are, as you know, we are incoming or needed identified, uh, places. We also hired Patricia Hamlin, who is a point eight, uh, replacing Jane Gregory. And she is that lady right smack dab in the middle. And, uh, she comes to us with, uh, some great ideas, working with both Torrance Sweeney and with, um, all of the teachers in the phys ed and health department. So that they've been very, very supportive. Uh, at the Deer Hill School, obviously Alex is our new principal. Uh, but at the Deer Hill School, um, Julie Gardner is joining us for a continued leave. Our second year leave as speech pathologist. And Jennifer McPhillips has, um, volunteered to, to follow some of her students and other new ones into grade two, which is a new experience for her. And, uh, we hired Callie, Callie Ann Harbert, who is that young lady right on your right.
In the JJ's photo.
In the JJ's photo, right. And on your left in the blue sweater on the other picture. So, uh, she comes to us with such great excitement. The kids were just, uh, jumping all over the place yesterday as, as she was leading them into Osgood. So she's a great, um, hire and being mentored by Jennifer McPhillips. And one cannot ask any better than that. Liz Dyninger has also moved from the grade two classroom and she has replaced Alex Sullivan as our reading specialist. She also holds that degree and certification, so, uh, both Patrick and I get to be guest readers for her tomorrow. As we, uh, revisit what I also shared on the first day is strictly no elephants, which is the, the school-wide reader. And I did read part of that to the teachers because I didn't want them to feel left out. Uh, and it's great message. But at the Deer Hill School, uh, we also have Jessica Pansons, who, uh, is an ESP, but she is the Instructional Technology Assistant. She comes with an amazing background in, uh, technology. She's taught virtual high school. Uh, and done a, a great deal within that realm, so, uh, we're very, very lucky to have her. We also have Charles Saluri, who is an ESP. And then, um, Megan Heinold, who is a speech and, uh, language, another, uh, family lead. So, uh, she's coming to us for one year until December, actually. It's not a full year. Very few hires at Deer Hill. So, at the middle school, uh, we have a returning person who we had a couple of years ago, Casey Shumiko. Is coming as a point three occupational therapist. She works in situ as well, but she's going to fill in that other gap that we need there. Uh, very gifted, very lucky that, um, we are getting that person. Then, of course, Carrie, who has taken on the associate principal and has done an amazing job. We have Maria Pepe is actually her name, Rodriguez, who comes to us from, um, Spain. She has been amazing, well organized. Uh, she's looking to buy a used car, if anybody's listening. She has found, uh, a place to live in Hull, uh, is, is in the process of getting a social security card, has everything in order. Very, very organized lady, uh, bunch of energy, just very exciting. I'm hoping to have her at one of our first, um, educator spotlights.
She speaks five or six languages.
She does. And, uh, she has done a, uh, exchange educator program in France. So she's teaching both French and Spanish at the middle school as a native speaker, has a great wealth, uh, to offer. So it's very exciting. And Kara Lantier is just an exciting little redhead you see in the picture there. If you just look on the, on the square picture, she's the one on the right. Pepe is the one with the red sweater. I'm sorry, that's Susan, right next to, right here. This over here is Kara and this is Pepe. This is Susan. But, uh, she is teaching our middle school science and, uh, I was just so impressed with all of them. And she was the first to say, you know, I teach children, I teach them decision-making and skills, and I hope to get the science in. So it was just what I wanted to hear, you know, teach children first and then, you know, for the whole child. So, very exciting. And then we have Matt Henriksen, who is our part-time, our, uh, health and phys ed replacement, uh, for the middle, middle school. He too comes with a great deal of energy and I think he's going to have some swooning little girls next to him. But, uh, he's, he's just energetic, young, wonderful. Uh, comes with some great, um, background as well. And, uh, he's that tall one standing in the back in the current picture. And next to him on his right is a high school person, Brian Heston, who is our point five social studies teacher. And, um, Caitlin Strongberg is, is now permanently on our staff. She, uh, replaced Heather Smith for two years on a family leave and Heather resigned, uh, to stay with her family. And Caitlin is now with us on a permanent basis. Suzanne Schwab, who is that young lady with the glasses and the purple sweater, um, is here as a high school special ed teacher. She too has a great deal of energy and just the energy in these eight people is just invigorating. It's just, it leads me to believe there's, there's some quality people and we got them. Sean Turner is moved from part-time social studies to full-time, replacing Jeff Buckley. Steve Rattundy, as you know, is our full-time, uh, AD. So we replaced him as an ESP. And so we hired two ESPs at the high school. And Jen, Jen Scott was with us last year, uh, teaching Spanish and world languages, and she is back with us again this year at the high school. She was wonderful last year. She pitched it when we needed someone and she's been a great find and she continues to stay with us. And then we have someone I totally love to keep and make blush, our, um, Director of Finance and Operations. He also comes as, as our wrap-up to all our new hires and it's, uh, it's just very exciting.
He shows up with the ice cream.
Yeah, what I do wanna say is, uh, much to my chagrin, we are losing one of our secretaries at the high school this week. Janice Webb has accepted a position that is more in line with what she did prior. So we are looking to hire that. Uh, Bev Goggan, our secretary for, uh, Director of Student Services, has also resigned and taken a position elsewhere. So we are currently interviewing both those positions that have been posted. And I think, um, Mary Buchanan and her team chairs were interviewing today. The high school has not taken that on yet. It's still posted, so we're in good shape. I don't know if you have any questions.
Very exciting.
It's very exciting.
We didn't get the bus tour when we became on the school committee.
You can try this anytime. Open invitation.
It's great. And Jane's wonderful about this is where you get good food and this is where you get your car fixed. And you cannot go to that beach even though you'd like to, so you just gotta get.
Unless they know someone with a sticker.
Unless you know someone with a sticker.
All the celeb- celebrity trivia too and movies filmed in town.
Or Steve Carell.
It's on the tour. You're on the tour now.
I have what I think is as accurate as we can have tonight for enrollment numbers. We squeaked up over a hundred in a kindergarten to a hundred and one. So, um, and that one, uh, required a full day. So we have no half-day kindergarten. And we have, um, the teachers that we had last year came back. Exciting, wonderful. They were so cute. They want to go back there every day. Our second grade is, um, a hundred and eighteen. I'm trying to think. I don't wanna go back here.
What's first?
I don't, no, I have that wrong. I'm gonna go to my regulations here. We have a hundred and one kindergarten. First grade's a hundred and six. And our second grade, where we have six teachers, is a hundred and eighteen. Deer Hill is, as you recall, where we have one of our last bumps. So third grade at Deer Hill is rather low. It's one fourteen. Our fourth grade is a little bit larger. It's one twenty-three. And our fifth grade bump has decreased somewhat, but it's still one thirty-nine. It was one forty-four. Then our middle school, uh, grade six is a hundred and twenty-two. Our seventh grade is a hundred and eleven. And our grade eight is a hundred and twenty-nine. They're all manageable numbers. High school, uh, a little higher in twelfth grade than we've had. Our ninth grade is a hundred and thirteen. Our tenth grade is that bubble that we keep following at a hundred and thirty-one. And grade eleven is a hundred and twenty-four. And our grade twelve graduating class is hitting an all-time one nineteen.
Wow. That hasn't been for a while.
For a while, right.
Yeah, that's huge.
It is, right. Where we had ninety-four last year. It's sizable. So it's a healthy.
Do you have the total?
Our total enrollment is one five seven two. It's still within that same kind of range that we have.
So it's six down from May.
And, um.
Oh, that doesn't count pre-K then.
Pre-K is twenty-two. And we have two, um, we have a couple of walk-ins also in there, so I don't know who they are. And that's, uh, is pretty much stable every year. That's what we kind of feel.
Is pre-K part of the fifteen seventy-two?
Uh, I believe it is. Yes, it is. Yes, it is. Fifteen seventy-two we turned up. We have eight hundred and two males, seven hundred and seventy females.
Do you have those, I mean, not, not for here, but just, do you have those breakdowns by grade, yeah, female?
Yes, I do.
I'm just, I'm just curious.
I can send you that.
Okay.
Yes, I do. I have every grade.
Okay.
There's, grade six is disproportionate. Other than that, the pre-teen. What's the, which is a little larger? The males. In grade six and s- uh, grade six, there are seventy-two males, fifty females.
Hmm. Wow.
The others are pretty well split.
I had a grade like that once.
And it's a, a great little class. I sat in on, on a couple of their, uh, assemblies and they were cute. They were wonderful. And Carrie has done an excellent job, uh, Agashi, at making them feel comfortable. Because I was hearing her say, so what are some of the problems? And one student said about my schedule. She said, yeah, I know. We've all got it though, so we got your schedule, you'll be fine. And someone else said, my locker? And she said, yeah, some of them will stick. I got that. Don't worry, we'll fix it. And she was just so cavalier about, don't worry, we got it, we know it, um, that they seemed to relax, um, very quickly. Good beginning morning. Good, yeah. I'll let, I, I have two other pieces and I'm gonna skip down to secretary's contract that needs a vote, but, uh, this is, is Michael's great work in, uh, getting bids out for, uh, bus leases. So I'm gonna let him speak to that a little bit, uh, because we're moving in the right direction.
So, uh, we put out last week an invitation for bids for, uh, eight new school buses. Uh, the, the buses we have are, yes, they currently have seven buses on lease, which is just coming to an end in the next few months. So we're aiming to have bids, well, bids are due back to us on September twenty-fifth. And hopefully we'll give you a decision very quickly thereafter, uh, so we can get the buses delivered as close to, well, even for December first is our the target date to give us time to get the buses insured and inspected and ready for the road, so they can be, you know, a part of next year.
Well, thank you, Michael. I got that email today.
That'd be good.
These, uh, do have seatbelts on, right? Correct?
These do not come with seatbelts, but they come with a, they're, you know, they come with a, they can have seatbelts installed in them. They don't have seatbelts installed.
I thought we were gonna ask for a RFP with seatbelt and thought we all agreed to that.
We were doing research on seatbelts.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I thought we were gonna include that in the RFP, to, to have seatbelts. Especially the one we were concerned most about is maybe having ones that travel for the school buses to get, actually going highways. They go sixty miles an hour, so we would turn out fifty-five an hour. So we're trying to see if we could have at least those buses with school, with seatbelts. Is that possible?
So, um, generally I think all the buses, you know, they're interchangeable. It depends on which drivers are doing which runs. So all the buses can go, can go in highways.
With seatbelts, huh?
Well, that's the question, I guess. Do you want to put seatbelts on all of them?
We wouldn't have a dedicated highway bus, is what Michael was saying.
Yeah, so it.
Right, but I, I, I would say that why, why wouldn't we just make the determination if we want to add, because we're leasing them correctly?
Yep.
Yes, so we're leasing the good part, let's say call it the good part, because what is it, a five-year lease, four-year lease?
Yeah, it's three.
Three years. So we're only leasing that three, we're only paying for those three years of the bus. So to be honest with you, it would be pennies on the dollar to add seatbelts and, you know, and I was asked to do some, um, research on that in the NCDA, uh, the National Transportation Safety Board back in May. Now, um, suggests and mandates that, uh, they require school buses. And that's, uh, seatbelts. That's something that was, been reversed because they had, they passed, say, that they didn't know because of the way they were set up, that it was okay. But in two, in May of this year, they now, um, recommend that all school buses, uh, have seatbelts. So, that said, uh, relative to the, the cost for the safety, I think it's pennies on the dollar. And I would hope that if you could ask that for the RFP, then we can make a decision if it's worth a couple bucks more, a few bucks, say.
Well, the request has already gone out. Okay, and we were, we were expecting that we would get more data from you on other school districts who has seatbelt. We, we talked about this at a meeting, who does have, you came to us with just one article.
Okay, so what am I supposed to do with the National Transportation Safety Board isn't?
But they're not requiring them, correct? They're recommending.
Whoa, they're recommending it and it also, it's mandated in every school district in New Jersey and thirteen other states. I'm just saying that we should probably look at, you know, what is the exact cost of it and how much is it worth to keep our kids safe? And that's, that's, I think that we should put out an RFP for one, has school buses. I mean, they, it's not gonna cost us any money. And then determine on if it's worth the cost, well, like I said, it's a three-year gig that we're actually buying the bus for. And this might be pennies on the dollar. And then as a father, I know that if my child is, is on a school bus on the highway, that they have seatbelts. Knowing that the National Transportation Safety Board had just, I thought this was kind of a no-brainer, to be honest with you.
Do you have any literature on the liability of students who, who do not wear the seatbelt? I mean, is, I mean, where's our liability if they, if they don't wear them?
Okay, there would be a, 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 you just asking me if they don't wear the seatbelt?
Is there anything?
I think there's a law that you have to wear a seatbelt in a car. I wouldn't imagine, why isn't that not a law on a school bus?
But it is law. I'm just saying, once they don't wear them, children would refuse to wear them. What do we do? I mean, where's our liability?
Well, I guess, and then, then it would, we're not mandating that they have them, but if they want them, like, I would prefer to have one for my child. I would ask them to put the seatbelt on. So, to you, that's a good point. I don't think we're mandating them. I think they're, they're for, available for students to have. And it's pennies on the dollars that we should look into that.
So, once we have young students on buses, we would need to ensure, if we want to ensure that they're going to wear the, those, then we would need somebody to make sure that they're wearing them. So that's an additional person on the bus.
Well, that's not, that's not what they do in New Jersey. They have to just say, just like anything else, buckle up.
Do you know when New Jersey, I'm just curious, when did New Jersey have that start going to a bad?
It's been, it's been a war in fourteen other states.
You know when in New Jersey?
No, and, and I know that after, uh, uh, I mean, a lot of major bus accidents in New Jersey seems to have more than.
Well, they had that one with the guy making the U-turn on I-280 or whatever, whatever.
But some of the bus drivers were not very qualified.
Right, I, I hear that.
And ours are. They're strictly better.
Well, my, my thing is, I'd just like to have a broad
Exactly.
discussion with a lot of information.
Right, but I thought, to be honest with you, I thought you'd come back with two prices. One is one and one is the other. And then we can make a determination and have a discussion.
We know about bus evacuations and do we have any research on seatbelts and the speed of evacuating a bus?
When, when students are buckled in and if something happens and they had to get on.
Evacuation drill, uh, every year. And so I, I wonder if there's some concern around that.
Well, like I said, I mean, I, I, I hope we can maybe table this discussion. And then we can revisit it because I would address that. And I think those are the things that we could, I mean, we have until January, correct?
Yeah.
So I don't think it's a big deal to get asked for an RFP and then we'd like, I, I definitely do the research.
But we would like the research.
Absolutely. I appreciate that. And I'll, I'll answer any, if you have any more direct questions, just send them to me and, uh, you know, I'll continue to do the research on it, yes.
I mean, I think you've, you've said that the information's available, but we haven't seen it.
Okay.
All you presented us was with that one article, so if you could do a little bit more.
Well, it's not just the article. It's the National Transportation Safety Board's decision. So it's not an act, just a one out of.
I understand that, but. But they have not mandated it in every, every state, so we'd like some more, a better understanding of that, please.
And, and in the meantime, can we get a pro- proposal based on, so, why have seatbelts?
I don't see why I cannot make an amendment to the, I, to the invitation for bids to say, um, please include the costs to.
For both ways.
And, uh, uh, like as an option.
As an option.
So the additional cost would be all including seatbelts. And then at least we'll have the information. So, the additional cost would be all including seatbelts, and then at least we'll have the information.
Thank you, Michael, and then we can all discern, we can just make a decision from that.
Yeah, but we need more data.
Absolutely, thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you. The last is the secretary's contract, which is now finalized and ready for a vote.
Right, we didn't vote it the last time because the union had not ratified.
Right.
So, um, I'm thinking that we are ready to vote now that they have ratified. So I would, um, ask for a motion to accept the secretarial contract for two thousand nineteen through two thousand twenty-one.
So, motion.
Second.
All in favor, roll call, please.
I, Paul Kearney.
I, Barbara Steffen.
I, Gina Stino.
I, Ellen Mar.
I, Jim Madden.
Okay, great, thank you.
And that's it for tonight.
Okay, well, next is.
My end.
Uh, my end.
No, 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 you're pretty good.
Or maybe this.
Next is school committee comments and communications. So, the school committee goals are listed as finalized, but Ellen and I talked about this earlier, that we may not be ready.
I'm draft.
For a final, well, yes, but we were gonna talk about.
Oh, but to finalize them, okay.
Um, but we're thinking that maybe we would schedule an additional workshop, maybe, maybe two hours, to sit and go through them.
Well, why don't we, why don't we try to go through comments tonight, and if we can, if we can tighten this up.
But we can go through, we can go through now. Right.
We might be able to, you know, follow through it. So, how, how do you wanna do it? You just wanna, we'll just start at the top?
Yeah, we can just start at the top and read them.
I mean, are we still talking about, like, trying to pare down, or language, or?
Yes, yes, and yes.
Okay.
Well, obviously, in the first one, th- those two bullet points, they're kind of the same.
Right.
They're the same.
Right.
Appointing a superintendent for the next contract cycle, twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two, so.
Right.
One just says appoint, one says work with a superintendent. I felt that identifying next steps in district administrative leadership was a bit vague.
Yeah.
Unless there's things we don't know about Patrick and Michael.
Right.
Cause I think, I think the only contract coming up is a superintendent's contract.
Just gonna say.
Is that correct?
I'm on the table here. Am I getting surgery?
No.
No.
So.
Just kidding.
So you, you're thinking, Ellen, of changing the, the, what's in the, the bar, is that?
No, no, le- leave, leave the blue bars, or purple bars the same, it's the bullet points underneath, which are our actual goals.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right.
The, the, um, the lavender or blue bars tie in, uh, in some respects to the, um, strategic plan.
Strategic plan, okay, okay.
How about in concert with the superintendent, if schools appoint a superintendent?
I, I'm just wondering, can I just make a comment?
Yeah, yes.
It, it sounds like you're going to go find somebody to appoint, in the event that I, I don't know. Could it be reviewed, the contract for superintendent, or discussed, or, I don't know.
Well, this might be one of those that we wanna have further discussion over.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so let's go to number two.
Okay.
Do, let's do the easy ones. I thought I was.
Okay, so, so, so then we'll skip over the, um, collaborate with capital budget and advisory committee.
No, on that first bullet point, I would just make a correction in the second line to, uh, where it says, tell manager for capital budget requests and FY twenty budget, not as well as.
I was at the select meeting last night, I was just wondering, do you think it's a good idea, maybe we can invite them in to come in and maybe do a, cause we're talking about capital here, right?
Uh-huh.
So I think it'd be, I think it'd be really nice if we can maybe even do a tour with them, along with ourselves, of the properties, and see what exactly we need for the facilities, would that be in the realm, to invite some of them to? Cause I think there's a big disconnect between the town and the school, and I think that if we can kind of join forces together, I'd see that, you know, that, uh, our interests are the same interests as theirs, and that's preserving the quality of our town. And I think if we give them a walkthrough, it might give them an understanding of what, what's needed in the district, i.e. air conditioning in Deer Hill, and try to, and see what they think, you know, I think that would be nice for us to do.
I think that the committees work pretty hard, try to work in concert with other boards.
Right, we have liaisons, they have liaisons.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think that maybe we can talk to them about doing a tour of the, the facilities, and let them understand what, how what our needs are, and what.
Well, first, first we have to, as a group of the district leadership, is come to consensus on what those needs are. We have to all be in agreement on them, and the process, um, is with the budget and finance subcommittee to begin the work, and I've outlined for Michael and Bart, like, the next three months of the things that we need to have touchpoints on, um, from capital expenditures, as well as the FY twenty budget messaging that's coming up, and some other things, and I don't remember them all. Every meeting is posted as of the whole, so everyone can participate. And so, once the subcommittee and the leadership come to an agreement, okay, what have we deferred from capital budgets? Is it still on the docket, is it still important, we'll put it forward, because we don't get everything we ask for. What's carryover, what did we present last year that we said, we don't need it this year, but we need it next year? We review everything that kind of exists already, and then the, the leadership group will have, um, Louise and Michael will have received, uh, in some cases, um, uh, requests from their schools, from the building principals, who are, who are there every day, say, I need this, or I need that, or I need this, and they do their own assessments of, uh, what's, what's going on, and then, you know, for, for smaller things, and then we work with the facilities department on the bigger projects.
Okay, so, um, the, the, the open, uh, me, the open, uh, war is until December tenth, correct? I think that's what we found out last night.
Special town, special town meeting, there's no capital request on special town.
Special town.
No, I get that, but, but, but we have to have any information that we want to buy the tenth, is that correct?
Um, no, no.
No.
Okay, so what, do you know what the, the protocol is for us to gather the information, and I think a workshop would do well, to be able to fund, or what would, could we make a request, save our air conditioners to be five hundred thousand dollars? How would we go out and then ask Michael to maybe get some bids to see what it would cost, so we know what it costs, and then?
No, we, we already have a ten-year capital plan.
And capital has a whole procedure of how.
How they wanna receive.
The town, how they wanna receive bids.
Right. Right, we don't, we don't tell them how we request, they tell us how to write our requests.
Okay, so, so, could I give probably to that information?
Yeah, of course.
Can you send me that, and then I'd like to work on that as well, and if, again, if we can get a, um, a, a, a good, get a sense of what we need, I can look at the capital, what we've already requested, and, uh.
Well, there, there already, that, that, there's a whole capital, I think you, you probably have the capital request.
Yeah, I think, yeah, you spread, I mean, we do review this, sort of, as a group, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so.
Yeah, so your best bet is, is to try to come to the budget and finance meetings, where we're gonna just start, start the conversations.
Okay, and in the meantime, can you send me that information?
Right.
Yep.
What, uh, what, what information?
Uh, what was already, uh, what was already being asked?
Oh, okay, oh, oh, the carryover, the?
Yeah, last year.
The last year's capital.
Yeah, so I'll just read that, I'll get, I'll get up to date, and then I'll, we'll bring it up again.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and you'll see, see what's been programmed out, and, and so then, so then we come up with our list, it's any, and, and included in the list are not our recurring items that, that we have to continue, such as, uh, bus leases, which come out of capital, um, technology, which comes out of capital, um.
The track?
Yeah, yeah, things like the track was finished, that came out of capital, so, um, there, there are the, the things that have to happen every year, so, so that goes into the school pot of money, um, and, and then everything else, but it's really a collaborative effort and a priority, you know.
Makes sense, okay, so I'll do my homework.
It might make sense for you also to look at the calendar online of all of the meetings, because those groups are subject to the same open meeting law we are, and all of their meetings are posted and public, so you're more than welcome to sit in the audience and listen to how they dither.
I will, yeah.
Right.
No, that's.
But, but you, but you, but, but just like I couldn't go to a meeting and say, hey, we want this for the school.
I appreciate that. There's a process.
Yeah, there's a process, and, and you can't.
Right, I get it, I just wanna know what it is, and try to work with that on a timely manner, so we can, I suppose, add some things there.
Yeah. Yeah, no, we're, 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 we're always on time, we're actually, um, we were there A-plus students last year, we got all of the requests in, completed, in triplicate, five-page requests with everything, um.
Right, in the format that they've requested.
In the format that they requested, with all the supporting documentation, and, um, they get other requests on napkins, from other departments.
From other departments, not from us.
Yeah, not, not from us.
Well, with school committee, we should have.
So, so that's the collaboration with capital budgets, um.
I, I really appreciate these, a program to honor and recognize individual community members, I mean, that could be something as simple as a form that says certificate of, and, you know, a plaque, or, I, I think that's important, because there's so many people in this community that give so much, and we wanna encourage even more, so I think that's important too, because I've received it from my high school, and it's, it's pretty cool. I mean, sending out a letter, it's appreciation, it's not that it's a, I love you wall or anything, but.
That's great.
I have, so I could actually get a copy of that, and bring, it's from Ranger Schools, and maybe can, can kind of take a peek at what they do, and recognize, cause I think that's huge, by encouraging and, and, you know, basically honoring people, sorry. Honor the people they give back to the community and encourage others, so I think that's, I think that's important, I think that's a good way to, uh, get some community involvement without any cost at all, other than, thank you.
Okay, we skipped one.
Yeah, we skipped one, so, um, I just changed the word in my, on my cheat sheet here, from orchestrate to plan and promote.
Yeah, I like that.
Yeah.
I like that.
There's only two of them though, you know, three, and then, and, and some of them are tough, cause they're all during the day, and people work it during the day too, so it's, it's hard to.
Well, this, this would be ours, so we can schedule.
Oh, this is our, okay.
Yeah, they, these are our coffees.
It's our school committee.
Oh, so we're gonna have coffee, that's cool, all right.
I, I just, I think that, I think that there's, you know, so much positive work of a school committee, and then there's so much, you know, that we're, we're not responsible for, I think it just helps, you know, for parents to understand that when they call us, you know, they can always call us, because they're our constituents, um, but that they understand, like, chain of command and communication channels, and things like that, and, and how.
We can't always answer the questions, or help them, other than guiding them to the right person that can help them.
And, and hopefully it cultivates interest for, for people to run, for a school committee.
I also think a lot of people don't know what the school committee does, and, and I am constantly promoting the website and saying, you know, look, look to the website, um, there's a lot of information on there that I think people would be.
People have been asking me, is, when you say it's televised, what station is it on, because nobody seems to know.
What, the school committee means?
Yeah.
It's on cha, it's on like, local cable, one four three TV.
One four three.
It's on channel twenty-two, on Comcast, and channel, is it thirty-six?
Comcast twenty-two.
Nine, I don't know what it is, on Verizon.
I think it's thirty-something on Verizon.
And that's, is it, is it replayed, or is it just live?
No, it's just live.
Okay.
But they do post them up on YouTube, um, if you go to the town website, and I think up in the top bar, Tracy, is it, is it right on the homepage? There's videos, there's a video link, and you can click on the video link, and you can find past meetings.
Yep.
Um, so then on to the next one, Paul, um, so my footnote on this one was, a, a program is great, but it, it needs to be vetted out a little bit more thoroughly, in my opinion, we need to have an objective, like, what we, what we hope to do, we have to have a process, we have to have a selection, um, you know, how, how do the process, do we nominate people, does the community nominate people? Do people in the school, I mean, and it could be all, everybody, you, you know what I'm saying, but we're gonna have to get it out there. Is there teachers are a great helper in the classroom that deserves recognition, or a coach, or somebody who volunteers or something? I, I do kind of feel strongly that people who are bona fide members of existing, uh, support groups, such as an athletic booster club, or the PSO, or the CEF, while they're active, might not be eligible. Because they're, they're already.
Yeah.
You know, um, but I think we all, we all know several people already who are, that's why it was worded individual community member.
I think what you're trying to say, Ellen, is they already come to us, and are recognized by us and thanked publicly.
Right, right.
So this is maybe a parent who has volunteered at every game to help promote some initiative, or, um, we do have somebody who takes photographs of sporting events, who is wonderful.
Right, somebody who donates football helmets.
That's different, that's a booster.
Oh.
That, that's different.
No, that, he's not a booster.
No, he's not, but.
He, he's, yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's all I'm saying, send him a thank you letter and appreciation from the, the school committee, we just wanted to recognize
Yes, yeah.
that you donated, and we appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I think that would be, but I understand what you're saying, that not, not like, we don't have to give out trophies to everybody, I get that.
Right, right, we should, we should have an objective for it, we, and we should come up with a process of how people get nominated, we should decide how many we wanna honor, you, you know, in any given school year, we should just have some, some guidelines around it.
Yeah.
Support media exposure on specific student's school or district achievements through targeted articles. That, that means we, that means we gotta write them.
But the school district kind of does that.
Yeah.
So maybe that's not a school committee goal, do you think?
Well, I, I think, I, for me, I would like to see it all on one media, I think we talked about that last week with Twitter, I'm not on Twitter. I, there's, there's a couple of reasons why, but, um, I guess that's the only way we communicate our sports around here, Twitter.
That might be good then.
I think, yeah, yeah, and, uh, I think that we could probably, um, use all our, just to get the word out there, I think that if we can collaborate, Facebook, and all the other various, um, uh, social leaders that we have, and try to put it all out there, like I was explaining earlier, I would have loved to know that we had a strength and conditioning coach, which was, which was so nicely donated by the Self Show Music Service Circus, that, um, they were able to have students in there doing, uh, strength training, which is so good for the social and emotional wellness of the kid, and that my child, my, we weren't, it's not because of me, my kids probably wouldn't have done it, but it's the kids that don't make the sports team that I'm really more concerned about.
Not everybody makes the team here.
Yeah, everybody does, nobody gets cut.
Oh, and, and, yeah, like, there's still kids that need a little bit, well, the point is, that was strength and conditioning, and I wish that every kid out there,
Yeah, no, I hear, I hear what you're saying, yeah.
because there are kids that don't exercise, that just play in the band, but this would have been a good, big time to actually learn how to exercise, and I think that it was only put through Twitter, I, I think that if we can try to put it out there as much as we can, because I know you do a good job, but I see, like, but there's so many different medias, there's Prosser Public School, and then there's.
I think we have to be very careful about how many people give out information.
Right.
Because, A, it can be conflicting, but secondly, it can be overdone and redundant.
Yeah.
So I think that if you have exposure on specific student's school, that really belongs to the district, I really, I, I almost want to really delegate things that happen within the school to the Twitter feed for the school, and the district to do the district area. I think we need to have lines where we own certain things, uh, and I think, it, my, and this is only my opinion, and, and I have nothing to base it on, I really think that the school committee taking this on is a huge task.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And there's always that one that's deleted or, or missed, that becomes offensive to somebody, so, I, I just think it's a big one for, for district.
Yeah, well, I, I guess, I thi- I think it's a, a big one, and, um, I'm glad Abigail's here, because I guess when I was thinking about this one, you know, you, you, you capture what, what the essence of the meeting, but sometimes we have students here for whatever reason, and if, and I guess in my mind, I was thinking, okay, well, the students who came and reported out for the first time on Model UN, like, wouldn't that have been, in hindsight, a great separate article?
A sidebar to.
That's not wrapped up in the school committee article, so I was thinking more, Louise, of pullouts from things that, that happen here, um.
Spotlights.
Spotlight, educator spotlights, so that because people are on the go, and they're, I think, more apt to read something quick and short, especially if it's student-driven or something like that, so that's kind of where I was coming from, when I was thinking about this one.
Mm-hmm. Well, maybe we could just structure it around the spotlight, so that we, would just help us maybe, instead of having it be so broad, you know, we could take the spotlights, and then for each one, have a little, um, I mean, it'd be, it would be kind of nice with the spotlights to have like a little summary, or a little, you know, story, feature of story with, with each of the spotlights. I don't know whether we would write that, or the teachers would write it, or.
Teachers would have to be here, in order to.
Well, they come, I mean, anyway, right, they're, they're.
If we're asking them to come present and to write, we will not get them.
It's too much, okay.
Do you think that they could, they could put some, something together so that it's in our folders? The highlights of what they're going to present to us, and then it's all done, we're not asking them to do something extra?
I also think the more we ask them to do, the fewer people would have volunteer.
It's a headache.
You don't think so, well, okay.
No, I need to do that.
Yeah, no, I'm just like, if I'm a teacher.
I think, what I'd recommend is that, um, you. I think what I'd recommend is that you leave it for a later discussion and see what I can think up on the backside as far as schools and what they would like to do. We may want an independent study student to write it up who wants to journal, do journalism. I don't know. Let me noodle on it a bit. Okay?
Yeah. Okay, okay. We have our new newspaper in the middle school, right?
There you go.
Do, um, sometimes, um, principals highlight that in their newsletters, like that type of thing or not so much?
Excuse me.
I feel like sometimes you get that, that kind of highlight of here's something you did or.
I think we should discuss it at another time.
Yeah.
I, I also think that there's, I'm thinking of it as an educator in the classroom, that I may do some really wonderful things, but I'm not presenting it to you and I don't get highlighted. I, I'm just trying to buy, think about the equity piece and I understand that it's great.
Right, right.
But I think that maybe, I just need to think it through a little.
Yeah.
Okay.
I understand what the purpose is and what the result. I think I need to just kind of think it through and maybe engage Abby into some brainstorming with me.
Creative writing.
Always open.
Always open.
Because part of this also came out of the middle high school school council.
Right.
You know, the comment was maybe, you know, it's all about athletics and how, how do we, how do we promote student achievement? So.
Well, that, that, yeah, I guess, yeah, how do we promote all achievement, right?
Yeah.
Try to be as encouraged.
Need to do a little bit.
Okay.
Yeah, well, okay, let's table that and go on to the next one.
Okay. The next one I think we have in two places. Engage leadership team in ongoing dialogue regarding student achievement and college outcomes. And we also have college identification process under student achievement on page two.
So maybe it doesn't belong there.
So I don't think it belongs here.
I don't think it does.
Okay. Safety and.
Safety and security.
Yeah. When, the first and second are kind of the same thing.
Don't we already liaise somewhat for updates because you get reports?
Yeah, the. Yeah, the SRO typically comes here maybe twice, twice a year.
Twice, yeah.
Right.
So that's, that's not a goal. That already happens. So that one.
Right.
And when's he gonna be here next? Do you guys know?
He comes in October, I think.
October?
Should be on that, on the calendar.
On the calendar.
Oh, yeah, the calendar. Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, so we'll cross that one off.
Yeah.
And I don't think that explore adding seat belts on buses is a goal. I think that that's part of the bus lease.
We already had it.
Yeah, so we take that off.
So that comes on. And I mean, work with town management police chief, I mean, we have no, no say in personnel situations, you know.
Y- you know. How about advocate for continuity in SRO instead of ensure? Because we can't ensure it, but we can continue to advocate for the continuity.
I don't know.
Yeah, I like that.
I don't think it's a goal.
I don't see it as a goal.
I know, it doesn't seem like it.
You don't think it's a goal? Okay.
No.
I agree.
Then what about the review with the SRO?
Um, I think it's important. I reviewed with him, Jen, I think you were there. Jen and I reviewed with him that assessment, although he didn't have the binder.
Yes, yeah.
I, it's three years old. I think it's time to review it again. I think it's time, all of the capital projects from the assessment are done.
Time to review it.
And it's time to look at it again. So I kind of feel strongly about this one.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I think that makes sense.
Then we can just have one bullet point under that.
Interfined, it's comprehensive.
Right. And then next is finance.
Should that be reconvene the safety and security committee to review, revise and edit two thousand fifteen?
Um.
Is that what you want to do?
Well, it would be a safety and security subcommittee task.
Yeah, it was, the committee is kind of, it, isn't.
Okay. The committee that did that assessment was there, right there.
I didn't know if we wanted all the, the players that we had before sitting on a committee.
I think we should have a subcommittee meeting, maybe?
Yeah. Yeah, this would definitely be a subcommittee.
I just didn't know when you were going with it.
Yeah, no, this would be a subcommittee goal.
Okay.
Do you want to keep the wording the way it is?
Yeah.
Yeah, I do.
Okay, that's okay. All right. Next is finance.
Do we want to keep it s- sort of simpler? Sorry, going back to safety and security, just say, conduct a review of two thousand fifteen assessment with SRO's two thousand fifteen assessment and update as appropriate protocols and procedures and cut the rest of it? Or do you like it how it is?
Well.
Well, I like, I kind of like what it says, clear lines of progress.
I don't know, do you?
Um, I, I, yeah, I get where you're going with that.
It starts getting into like a very specific aim.
An update is appropriate period.
Yeah.
Right. I don't think it.
But because the assessment covered.
Yeah.
It covers that.
It covers everything.
Yeah.
Okay.
And do you want to tie the capital plus to it or what?
We won't know till we go through that.
I think it's.
Yeah.
So, so this, this next goal is kind of, I think, a carryover from last year. It's a big, big, big undertaking, Michael. Short-term, long-term facility improvements. Are you game?
I'm almost finished.
Oh, you're, you're. You're almost finished, okay. Um, y- you know, sometimes it's all right if you have a goal that takes two years and this could be a yellow light if we, you know, we started the process this year. I think, I think it's, it's gonna be an ongoing, um, and typically I'm always of the mindset if it's ongoing and is part of what we do, it's not a goal, but I think it's so important, it needs to be a goal.
Well, to get, get into the process up and running.
Yes.
So we feel that we have this covered, I think, as the goal, you know, and then continue it and just become part of our usual practice.
Yeah. Yeah.
And I think that, I mean, my feeling is that the capital, the process for capital that we're doing is, we say the budget.
Budget and financing, yeah, yeah.
By the subcommittee to be part of this.
Yes, yeah.
Because I think, I think this should drive what your budget, your capital priorities are.
Exactly.
And it won't all be capital because some of the safety improvements don't require capital, but.
Right. Right.
That shit's gonna be.
Yeah. Um, special education reserve fund policy. We wanted to review it, which kind of goes hand in hand with, you know, study the trends in sped, spending. But we wanted to review it in the event that I think when we met as a subcommittee, we felt that the parameters we put upon ourselves, which are beyond what mass general law dictates, might not account for situations where we need it.
Yep.
So, um, that's why that's there. And that, that would be a subcommittee that would bring back to everybody.
So far, put that poll under policy. Would that be yes?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah. Okay.
I don't think it's super complicated. It just has to get done.
Right, and it has to get done and then we just have to have a board of selectmen.
Right, approve it.
Approve it. It doesn't have to go through like the stabilization fund, go through.
Right.
This next one I think kind of came out of Steve Gommer's comment.
Yes.
Yeah. It's a good idea.
It, I think it's a great idea, but I just don't know if there's any vehicle. So last year when we presented our FY nineteen budget, we highlighted the fact we lost, and I forget the number, fifty thousand dollars in grants that we had been enjoying for a couple of years.
Yeah.
That we're coming through the federal government, right?
Yeah. And Steve Gommer said, well, why can't you just create your own reserve fund to off, so you accumulate and, and against the potential of loss of grants, like the town has free cash, we don't have free cash.
Yeah.
You know? So I don't know if this is a, a goal and if the answer's no, then it's done.
Right, we know. Do other towns have anything?
Yeah, so I mean, I guess, I guess it's also just about managing our exposure to the risk of losing a grant. Because there might be more than, maybe that, you know, maybe it's something like that.
Right, yeah.
In, in just this particular year.
Right, right.
Because sometimes that is the one off.
Mm-hmm.
So then what you do the next year, because now you don't have, you know, so say we set up a fund.
Yeah.
And the first year we lose a grant, we're able to plug that hole, but when you do the next year, you just keep drawing on the same fund until it's empty.
Right, right.
Unless you're able to keep. My decision, I were just in a, you know, that's just a whole pretty much.
It, it is interesting though because he did kind of, uh, to, when I was listening, he like positioned it as a way to keep your service delivery steady. That kind of seemed to be where his thought process was on it.
Yeah.
Right.
And oftentimes if you lose the funding, you might not lose the whole grant, but you might go down a perc- a percentage.
Yeah, there's. Yeah.
Grants go with the, with the politics of the nation.
Yes.
I mean, they, they go, for example, the Title II grant went down, but we have a Title IV grant that went up that was new. So there, it's the fluctuation of where we are. So it, it's fluid and it's by need and again, it's developing this pot of money that once we deplete it, how do we build it up again? And it, I don't know how that would be done is what I'm saying. I don't know how that would sustain itself, so.
Well, you, you, you just have to make the decision that a free cash at the end of our year, you know, traditionally we put it all into the sped reserve fund.
Right.
Do we, do we take the fifty thousand and put twenty in the general reserve fund, our general reserve fund and thirty and, you know, you have to make those choices. You start splitting up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And are you, is our school allowed to even do that type of thing? Because if you're not allowed to really carry over its nuts.
Yeah, my, because you hear, I like to say stabilization funds because there, there was a fight for something in conversation with sped stabilization fund, could have set one up even before the modernization act specifically allowed it.
Right. Well, we were going to.
Yeah.
We had plans to do that and then they passed that.
And they changed that law. They enacted that law.
And they.
Yeah, and we can, I can look into, you know, we can work out what our, our risk management process is.
Mm-hmm.
And how do we avoid too badly hurt if grants are cut? I mean, part of the risk, part of the problem is, is sometimes you don't find out a way after the budget's been set.
Right.
Right, and that's, but that's something that's part of the point.
Just that year, probably, it's a whole year of just the budget.
Yeah, I think that's where the idea though is that it is so material, you know, the way it goes.
Yeah. Also grants are not supposed to supply, you know, so it's a whole thing of it's a lot, so.
Right.
Right. So shall we leave it on or take it off?
I should go on. I mean, I think, I think addressing that risk is definitely likely.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
All we have is investment.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
That one makes a lot.
All right. Study trends in sped, spending for FY twenty budget improvements.
I mean, do we alr- we, don't we already do that as part of our strategic planning process?
Uh.
Or does it need to be?
Well, well, honestly, you know, I don't think I did it this past year, but I had done it the previous couple of years.
Does it Mary do that or does she not? Kind of, or not, not formalized?
You can.
I. The only thing I see is the budget.
Okay.
But I had done, when Katie and I were working on it, I had looked at, um.
Right, she had the trends.
Look, looking at the trends over time and looking at the population instead and for people compared to a gen ed.
Right. 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 I mean, that's probably just important to have it probably really in your planning process every year.
All right, so we'll keep that to that. I'll do it. I'll recreate.
So we're gonna take that off?
No, I think leave it.
No, we're gonna leave it on. So we're leaving everything on.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So next is student achievement.
Oh, no, and I edit spit it for it.
For everything, for everything else we have like a little blurb in the.
Yeah, and we didn't have a little blurb in this book, so we'll walk on that. Maybe after we go through the bullet points, it'll become clearer what it should say.
Ensure that our students are doing really awesomer.
Yes. Awesomer? Was that what you said? Awesomer?
Or how about the awesomest?
So examine the college identification process as it relates to our delivery of guidance services to better understand how students compile their list of college choices. Further explore the competitive nature of college applications and acceptances by our students. Let's read through all of them first and then see what we can push to the, to number, number five. Then provide continued support of the NAM study. That doesn't really go with the revisit school committee benchmarking. I want Ellen to weigh in on that because she was, just, she was talking about maybe changing the way that's getting done. Working with superintendent, assistant superintendent, monitor progress of wellness. Now, these are all individual freestanding things, so they don't deal.
The first two really, uh, principal goals, building goals.
We just, we were kind of, you're right Louise, but we were kind of looking for a better understanding of how guidance service delivers services to students and how the, how they identify where students are applying to colleges to see if maybe they're making the right decisions or maybe they should change the way their decision making happens.
I guess my question is, who's going to do the examining? So examine the college identification. Is the school committee going to do the examining? Or is it simply a report from the school in which it's the school's goal reporting out to you?
Yeah, Louise was saying this is kind of a building.
You're saying that you're going to examine. I don't know who will be doing the examining and who being the exploring.
Well.
And it's the same with the NAMs, who?
So exa- examine, examine the college identification process. I think Louise, what this was last year and what I think continues to be is for the committee, because Jean and I are the only ones who had students go through guidance and other than Lily, it was an old process.
Mm-hmm.
So I think it's really just understanding, having, maybe it's an educator spotlight. Maybe it's guidance coming in.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying. Is it a request for information or is it actually a school committee goal?
Or is it a school committee goal? Probably isn't, but.
I understand what you want is as information, but I guess I'm wondering if it's your goal, who on the committee is doing the examining and who's doing the compiling and who's doing the exploring? And who's defining the competitive nature? Who's doing the work?
Well, the students compile their list. Further work of college applications and accomplishments. So I think that's, that's, um, relates to the last page of the benchmarking that we do that highlights based on col- college board's designation of competitiveness by school. And we see how many students are, of our students are accepted at every level.
Mm-hmm.
That's further explore the competitive nature of college.
So wouldn't this be like guidance council or?
Yeah.
Because I like what you're saying. I, I, I totally agree with you and you made some good points last time you were saying how like they're looking at community services. They're looking, schools are looking at different things than just the way they used to have the model. So to your point, I think it's a good idea to keep that in there, but maybe we can, maybe some of the guidance councils can update Louise on what the protocols are for the, you know.
But you're identifying it as your goal, so it's your work. That's what I'm asking.
Right, right, right.
Right, so, so, so maybe Louise, maybe your suggestion, like someone suggested that we make it an educator spotlight and have them come and explain, maybe, maybe with a couple of students and explain how they made their choices.
Guess I'm asking, is it, is it a request for information or is it actually something you would expect to accomplish as a group?
A little bit of both.
I was gonna say depending upon what's presented, might.
I think it's, I think.
If they're doing the work, then it's their goal.
Right, yeah.
You do the benchmarking, it's your goal.
I, I don't think what we're trying to get at is something that we can do. So it's, I think it's a totally different type of conversation.
How about we.
Does it meet the SMART goal acronym? Is it specific? Can it, is it measurable?
How about just. I have a different SMART goal I love for guidance, but. I have a different SMART goal I love for guidance, but it doesn't really have to do with this, but it's related to guidance and college.
The, the, the issue with the SMART is that if it's action oriented, are you the one doing the action?
No, but I, I don't think, I don't think any of the stuff we're asking for is stuff that we can do, quite honestly.
That's what we need a different goal.
Right.
Any, anything, whether it's what I'm, I'm sort of more interested in how is time split, um, when, how, how much time is spent on guidance, how much time is college counseling? What type of training happens? That's the stuff I'm sort of more interested to start with before you start getting to this other stuff. But that's not really a school committee goal.
So many of your other goals are.
I mean, it's something I might come and say, hey Louise, I've been thinking, but.
I guess the goal for us is to make sure that we have, that the, the guidance councils have all the information and that they're proactive to knowing the needs of the students.
Alright.
And again, that's, again, be the purview of the superintendent, assistant superintendent and principal.
Where does it go?
Right.
My question kind of goes back, maybe it's more attainable because it's just trying to get data on percentage of time spent on specific tasks, so we understand if we're staffing properly for the needs of the modern application process.
Yeah.
Then your goal is to assess the, the scheduling of duties for guidance counselors.
But that's again, not a thing we can do.
Your assessing is one thing. To assess it or analyze it would be yours. To examine or provide or explore, unless you're doing it, is really a school goal.
But we can't do that either. I can't, a, a school committee job isn't to go and, Tate, tell me how much time you spend doing this. It's not my job.
How about we?
No, she's saying.
You could, but when you assess it, you're not actually gaining it. You're asking for the information.
Okay.
And as a group, looking at what it looks like and saying, is this what we want within our school?
Mm-hmm.
Is this, then we have a conversation. What you're doing is actually having the data and discussing it.
I mean, I think we can get a lot of this other information down the road if we figure out sort of some broader structural trends, right? That's how I'm sort of seeing it, but.
I. I'm gonna step out on a limb and say, I think you need a separate session to look at what is it you want the outcome to be?
Okay. Mm-hmm.
And who's responsible for getting it. And I think that's a longer conversation.
I think this is a different person's goal, not a co- committee goal.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I'm just sitting here ruminating and, and I'm thinking that.
We can only measure information.
Yeah, if, if we could, be, because we can't go to what we don't know.
Yeah.
So what if we request that there's an educator spotlight from guidance before our January mid-year review of our goals? And if we have that, and then we have a footnote to our goals after that, that there's something that we can actually do and impact in effect, we could add it to the goal then, or not?
Then your goal is to consider information on, uh, guidance services and college choices. Then when you're considering that, and then to plan.
Support.
Support. I, I, I just think what you have here is you're doing the work and it, it doesn't fit.
It fit. No, no, understood, totally understood.
Yeah, so I think it's something you need to brainstorm in, in Wood Smith.
Alright, okay.
And I think that the next item, provide continued support of the NEM study, I'm thinking that that may not be student achievement. That may be financial, because I think we talked about the fact that we are going to have to support that financially in order to make it work. I E, um, the, the teaming structure.
Yeah.
Yeah, I also think. It's a financial decision. The NEM study is a study and it's done.
Right. It's done.
So you're not going to provide continued support. We don't need support for a study. A study is a study.
Right. Finding.
And I think what you need is to continued support on.
Yeah, yeah. The recommendations.
Yeah, the recommendations for, um, forwarding the structure of a middle school concept.
The action plan.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that you are the support behind what comes forward to you. And she's trying to separate, where, where you get kind of confusing and foggy is what is really being done in a school and then reported back to you.
Yeah.
And you don't wanna own that.
Mm-hmm.
And that can have a lot of implications in the two, so that that makes sense.
Right. Right.
And I think your other three are, are excellent goals, actually.
I had to rewording them, revisit school committee benchmarking.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Um, what did I say? I said revisit school committee benchmarking to include elementary level indicators as well as data regarding tier two and three interventions to better support student achievement.
Could you say that one more time, Barbara?
Uh-huh. Um, so revisit school committee benchmarking.
To include.
To include elementary level indicators as well as data regarding tier two and three interventions to better support student achievement. I don't know if that makes sense, Robert, but. I don't think it really, but it made sense, I don't know if I can say.
Um, when I, when you said this goal, I think you were concerned that, of we, maybe not so much elementary, but maybe the primary grades were not getting any much data from.
Um, yeah, there's, there seem, well, especially with MCAT, yeah, you're kind of a little bit more in a black hole.
Yeah.
And I, I'm not, I'm not gonna say what we need to do, but.
I mean, there's a lot of growth in those ages, but I don't, I don't.
Yeah.
But if you say elementary, it, I kind of think of older students as opposed to primary.
If you're thinking primary, it's early education is really the term you want to use.
Yeah. I don't know whether you want to go.
I mean, and this wasn't something where I was, had a specific thing in mind. This was something where it was like, you know, hey Louise and Patrick, are, is there information that would be helpful for us to understand how we're doing in K to five? Because how do we, had, my, the question was kind of coming down to how do we know we're doing a good job of what we're supposed to be teaching, like how?
Can your goal be to, um, continue discussion on alignment of growth from pre-K five? Cause that's where we are. We're looking at the growth spectrum for the, from pre-K five and how it feeds into one another. I think you, this is another one that's going to have to brainstorm and.
Well, yeah, I mean, and if you guys, and it might, I mean, I was in the back of my head thinking, are the stal- standard for all, if that's a useful tool? And I'm not an expert to be able to say we should be using that. That's where I was kind of thinking you guys could provide guidance on like, some of that's useful, some of it's not. Maybe we could use this, these specific.
The offsets are very useful, but we need both in order to measure growth and individuals.
Yeah. Right, and we do it as.
So it's very difficult to look at the early and really make it a viable database. But there's nothing that we can't get together and say, okay, so how do we measure how successful we are? And I think that's a really great conversation to have with the staff and to really examine, we have early education. How do we know we're doing the very best we can with the children we have?
Me, cause I, I'm also.
How do we measure growth?
Yeah, I mean, because we've now aligned the taking of that, um, assessment at the same time of year, so it's comparable three years apart, I guess. What is it? Second, third, fourth, yeah, three years apart. And you, I mean, you can measure individual changes, you know, are you in the same stain as, as you were before in this area?
Three.
And also, um, it compares you to, you know, similar districts.
Mm-hmm.
Or, you know, socioeconomic indicators of this is what we would expect, how you would perform, and this is how you perform, so.
Mm-hmm.
I, and again, I'm not an expert on that test, how it asks the questions. I mean, I know there's plenty of tests where you could say, oh, it, you know, completely inflates these types of scores by ten percent over that type of test, so I don't, but. I'm just kind of looking to you guys to say, yeah, that could be, that could provide some useful indicators that could tell us how we're doing, or you might say, no, it's not that idea.
I think you have experts right at Osgood who can tell you that. They're a very bright group.
I mean, I'd love to have something, obviously you'd wanna have some nice, perfect.
Mm-hmm. Right.
Assessment that tells you, oh my god, you guys are doing awesome, but, you know.
Well, I think. You, one of the things about putting an assessment out in the public is then all of a sudden people start teaching to the assessment. And people get great anxiety. So you, you might wanna, and then it sort of makes the assessment less, um, less an, less of an indicator.
I get it, I'm, yeah. See, that's where I think if you're doing those districts, you have a big, big problem, but.
I think what you want is how do we measure growth at the elementary school? How do we measure? How do we know?
Well, and we also.
It's a bigger discussion.
Yeah.
It's a bigger, it's a bigger discussion, and I think it came out of the fact that the benchmarking that we do, other than the general info, you know, it's AP and SAT and college, it's very secondary driven. So we're trying to, trying to as a committee sh- have some balance in, in our measuring and in our reporting and what would be those vehicles at the elementary level.
Well, one would say that the end result is where you're measuring over time, so it would be secondary.
But you wanna intervene, um.
You do, right, and that's where you get your.
So.
But, but the benchmarking isn't meant for intervention. The benchmarking is our report card.
Right.
Um.
We probably need to look at our standards based on what kind, how are we measuring? I think it's a bigger conversation for another time.
Okay.
I mean, in the previous years, you, you had the MCAS being of some help, but right now, it's really not very much help.
Can I just ask, and I, I don't mean to put an antne ointment, but when you talk about communication and collaboration or anywhere, is there anywhere where we consider what we have had for fifty years as a diversity in our medco program and where our population is changing? Is it addressed anywhere?
Yeah, I, I'm glad you brought that up, cause I was gonna ask Michael to maybe explore some of this. There's misinformation and thank you for doing, you did a great job looking to what was online, what we think people saying about the school and how we matched up to find out where do we compare to other districts? If you remember, you did that, um, Ellen, you presented that.
Yeah.
Um, and Michael, you weren't there for that, but one of the things that, uh, a, a lot of it was, is that we need to like claim our own websites, like our, our, there's, there's stuff out there that doesn't have the correct information that judges us. And I, I asked you to just explore, do a Google search for Cohasset. And you'll see that there's so much misinformation out there that we can actually claim that website and give them the correct information.
I'm confused.
That's, yeah, that's kind of off topic.
Are we, are we? Well, we're talking about benchmarking the.
The benchmarking that Ellen did is related to concrete data about testing.
Okay.
So she, what, well, I shouldn't speak here.
No, no, go ahead.
No.
Um, but what she did is we looked at, at different communities.
Right.
Um, and we took their SAT scores, AP scores, math scores. That's, that's the big benchmarking that we're talking about.
See, the, the publications in Boston Magazine just came out, and if you're on Masked Info, you saw some woman, I don't know, I, on some school committee person, she did an analysis of, um, the, the rankings and of, you know, the, the changes. And I'm just looking, cause you can just see, and she said, last year, last year, yes, 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 this year, no, no, no. So, so the data elements that are compared, so because the Boston Magazine, US News and World Report, niche dot com, um, um, oh, there's one other one, I forgot what it is, I'm so sorry. Change everything every year, the up and down every year is, is relatively meaningless. Um, so that's why we were doing it on our own. And I guess the point of the change in benchmarking is, we're steady eddies. Everybody is steady Eddie in, in the benchmark districts that we look at. If, if you're seventeen hundred on your SATs last year, you're gonna be seventeen hundred next year, you're gonna be seventeen hundred the year after, you're seventeen hundred five years ago. It's just, it's just the way the districts are. Same thing with AP. You might go up a few points or down a few points. So the purpose in my mind of this goal is, do we really need to do this anymore, or are there other things that we should be looking at? Um, and that's when it came up about, I think, the elementary level reporting.
And that's why I think the tier two and tier three, that idea of just how we're supporting kids is maybe more meaningful at this point. If it's steady Eddie on the benchmarking, then I'm.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe we could be doing something at the lower grades that will continue to.
Give us all an awareness. I think we're all aware now of how our secondary level performs in all these standardized testing.
Uh, yeah. Mm-hmm.
So, so to me, the goal is, what now do we do so we really understand as a committee how our elementary levels are performing?
So.
No.
I don't know, I'm just trying to, we, we started with Louise talking about diversity and community, communication and collaboration.
Oh.
Oh, no, with, a flying event, it's just, um.
And we. Oh, yeah, and we backtracked, so sorry.
I'm just looking at the number of, um, ELL students we're, we're now getting, we're attracting from different areas. How we, we have more, uh, non-English speaking students coming in. We've had our first ELL teacher hired last year. We have an increase this year. We had three students come in over the summer who, English is definitely a second language.
Yeah.
So what would be our goal?
I think that the diversity committee in the community has given rise to itself. It's becoming a bit more active. Uh, for my part, my particular goal is to hold at least one, uh, parent, superintendent's coffee with the discussion of our medco program and our Boston students. So that I can attract our Boston parents and our local parents and some of our students, so that they become more of an integral part of our discussion. We've had two years of doing literature and discussion and training on the leadership end, and I'd like to have another breakfast with just the students, particularly our six twelve, to find out, um, what is going on in their brain, what's happening. We also had a new director for our medco program and, and what are our needs, so, um.
The state director, right?
A, a, a regular medco director for the state is new, and she.
Y- yeah, ours is not. Ours is state, okay.
Ours is not, yeah, right. Our C E, CEO is different. She is coming to our, um, leadership meeting on the twelfth of September to present her views and her kind of, so that's my frame of reference right now. And also, I think it's time to really look at it. Do we have this program for so long? And where did it go? Where are our host families? Do we still need them? We just received an added funding for the medco grant that the CEO worked on. And hopefully we can get a late bus, at least share one with Hingham or someone.
Sounds fabulous.
Do we need that? What will it do? So I guess that's where my head is right now. Um, thinking we need to address the changing, um, not the culture, the changing.
Demographics.
Demographics, that we need to be ahead of it instead of with it. Does that make any sense?
Yeah.
Yeah, it does.
Proactive approach.
Did you, when we talked about media exposure, did that get crossed off through targeted articles? That was for further discussion, or? I'm going back to communication and collaboration. I'm wondering if maybe that goal becomes to, you know, highlight initiatives and achievements or?
Again, I think this is a time when you need another workshop.
We need another workshop.
Yeah, we need another workshop.
Yeah, we're on now, yeah.
Alright, okay.
Alright.
Okay, um. So do we wanna schedule that now or do you wanna wait?
Um, I think we should schedule.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm available any night next week except Monday and Tuesday, kind of all week.
Um, I'm busy on Monday, starting at eight, I think it is.
Do, maybe, do we wanna do an hour before the school committee meeting on the nineteenth?
Hmm, I could do that.
Yeah, that might be a good idea.
Sure.
Okay.
So we'll do it six o'clock, that same thing with today, with that one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And if you.
Do we wanna make the regular business meeting seven thirty again?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, what, what's.
Yeah.
Alright.
So if you, if anyone has, has comments or wording, just send it to me and me only.
Sure. Okay. Okay.
Um, so we're not in violation and I will come up with a third draft.
Yeah. Okay. Sounds good. Does anybody have any sub- new reports?
Um, I just need to, um, Barb, my long range planning was canceled Monday, so I can go to the pep meeting Monday night. I, okay. Think I'd sent you a note, um.
Yay!
And I just had another comment. We received on. And I just had another comment, we received on the twentieth of June a, a calendar for, um, of, of meetings. You might wanna review it.
Okay.
To make sure everything is.
All right, so can we put the, um, the schedule of meetings in the next packet so that we can look at it?
Schedule of agendas, the agenda items.
Do you remember?
The, the year-long agenda?
Calendar of agenda items.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, yeah, all right.
This one, right?
Yeah, this one, we got it on the twentieth, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so the year-long agenda for twenty eighteen nineteen. Mm-hmm. And then maybe also include the list of, the list of meeting dates, just so that we have it freestanding. I know it's on there, but it's, it's one sheet.
Just the dates themselves?
Yeah, the, this, this list, and then the, um, the year-long agenda that has all the different
This one.
meeting content.
You emailed it out to us, Louise, on June twentieth.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Okay, any other reports, information, et cetera? Okay, so then we'll move on to approval of minutes. And the first minutes in the packet, um.
Oh, can I actually go back to one thing?
Yeah.
Sorry. I think it's on your calendars, but just a reminder that the CPAP welcome coffee and rights and responsibilities presentation, I believe, is on the nineteenth, right? At nine thirty is of the coffee and then basic rights, presentation takes place right afterwards at ten.
Is that here?
Yes.
Okay.
So just FYI.
Just, just a packet.
Thanks, that's it, yeah.
Would that be on the schedule as well, in the, uh?
The CPAP one?
Yeah.
Yeah, it would be, I just kind of generalized for just.
Yeah. We made some good changes to the PSO, uh, we can actually download for each school what the activities are.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I haven't looked at that yet.
Yeah, it's gotta be a little bit tweaked, but I think Laura's done a really good job with that.
Yeah. That's been a long time coming.
Yeah.
Yes, it has. We suggested that the year.
There's a, I think that's something we can recognize.
So it's all good.
Cassie has worked very tirelessly on putting those, uh, digital calendars together.
Making sure. Yeah.
Trying to educate a lot of my fellow friends to, to do that.
Yeah.
Cause they keep asking me questions, I'm like, guy. Try to go to a school meeting. I'm actually putting an information pack for some of my friends to find things. You know, a lot of them just know Twitter. But I actually am gonna have a, a Monday night football game and bring some information. Cause they keep asking me about Blackwood and how do we get this ratio? You know, my wife knows everything, ask her. I'm trying to get more informative and I think that's good way to do it.
There's like, I won't say, but there's like one parent in town, people literally will say like, so-and-so, do you know? Like she's repeatedly tagged because she knows everything.
Yeah, so let's get, yeah, it's information.
Alright, we have minutes?
Okay, minutes, Wednesday, June twentieth, any comments?
Um, yeah, I don't know, on, on page one, under superintendent's gift, um, report, the Cohasset Middle School Online Newspaper at sixteen hundred dollars. I don't know if we wanna notate that, that's gonna be a stipend position going forward, because that was a one-time gift. It's up to, I, it was just in my notes. If it's not important, it's fine.
Wait, that was the gift for that, I'm.
Yeah, the CEF gave a gift and, and I just, I wrote down, cause Cindy Matheson said it, she goes, this is a one-time thing, because
Uh-huh. Oh, okay.
The position should be a stipended position going forward.
Okay. Um, do we want that on there or?
So it's a stipend, it was, it's a stipend for an advisor?
Yes, for FY twenty.
Cohasset Middle School Online Newspaper Advisor.
Is that correct?
And then in parentheses, a one-time gift?
That's correct.
Okay.
At the middle school, sixteen hundred dollars?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
On, on page two, under middle high school improvement plan, second line, I would say review of the high school GPA calculation.
Yeah, okay.
Deer Hill Room Temperature Update, Mrs. Dean has distributed a, it should be classroom temperature, not a clock. Cause otherwise we're saying it's temperatures.
Class temperatures.
They all have monitors in their mouths, yeah.
Not in their ears?
Or whatever.
Okay.
Little strips on their corsets.
Nope, that's all I had on that one.
Okay, on, on minutes five two eighteen, on the last page.
Uh-huh.
Um, the first minutes were for the public hearing and the second minutes for, for the regular meeting.
Regular meeting, whoops, I missed that.
Not the hearing.
Where was that? Um, underline minutes.
Will we approve the minutes at the end?
Yeah.
The second one for the same date, five two, five two, the first one's public hearing.
Okay.
Second one is regular meeting, not, take out the word hearing and change it to meeting.
Oh, the hearing, okay. Okay.
Okay. All right, do I have a motion to approve the minutes as amended for our Wednesday, June twentieth, seven eighteen?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, next is, next are the, uh, school committee minutes for Wednesday, July eleventh.
Hi, Michael.
I didn't have anything either, I just had a question mark on the transportation update, but that was, that was what was reported to us, so. I just was curious what happened between July and the end of August on bus repairs, because things kind of went downhill at the end. That's, that's all I had. So do I have a motion to accept or to approve the Wednesday, July eleventh, the two thousand eighteen minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then Wednesday, August eighth? Um, just for your information, Tracy, Mr. Sullivan, is Dr. Sullivan now? You may have missed that meeting, actually, you, you were out a couple of times.
I tweet that all the time.
He actually made sure we told you that.
No, I just figured it would be nice for.
No, I appreciate it, thank you.
I'm gonna start addressing you as Dr. Sullivan, assistant now.
No, you don't, you don't, I really don't. I don't be nice for them. Totally, okay, totally.
You're all gonna think that Alex's husband is sitting here.
Oh, yeah.
All the kissing.
How'd you get a table in the rest of this?
That's funny.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else have anything?
No.
Okay, so could I have a motion to approve the, um, meeting minutes for Wednesday, August eighth?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's great. And we, I don't have any topics to knock.
I do have a topic, I'm sorry.
Oh, you do?
I do, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
I forgot it in my review. Um, the food van, the food service van that we are trying to gift to someone.
Yeah.
Uh, we had interest by the, um, facilities, Mark, we, we thought he could probably use it.
Uh-huh.
He came to look at it today and went, nah, not so good. So we still have the van sitting there, uh, the possibility is to give it to facilities for parts.
Maintenance will maintain, so they could use it as traded for new vehicles.
Maintenance. Training as a vehicle or, I think you already voted that we could get rid of it.
Well, we have. Yeah, we already have that and we have two buses, so just.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all we need to hear, thank you.
Make them go away.
So we need it.
Okay.
We're trying to make them go away, no one will take on.
Make them go away, your passion.
Well, well, I'm missing it too, with these buses coming in, it's EPW, they're gonna have, they're gonna be a little up to here with our school vehicles if we don't get rid of them.
Yeah. Okay, so we do not have any need for the second, uh, for the continued executive session? So, um, could I have a motion to adjourn at nine thirty-seven?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Louise, I hope you feel better.
Thank you.
It was tough for you.
I don't have much of a choice.
Yeah.
Well, I do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry to cut my way through tonight.
Not easy, it's nice to be in here.